Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 6th Board of Education meeting in Antioa. We have a tobacco policy in place. There is no smoking within 100 feet of any school building. Please rise for the pledge. Board Clerk, will you please take role?
Trustee Knudsen.
Here.
Trustee Jerome.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell Morale. Trustee Goodrich.
Here.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch.
Here.
Trustee Ramondo.
Here.
Trustee Bishop.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have our high school principal, Mr. Lance Edelman, here to welcome the board.
Good evening. And welcome to Antioa High School. Before I begin my presentation, I just wanted to acknowledge and thank all of our teachers. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, and actually, today's the National Teacher Appreciation Day. I'm particularly grateful to my staff, my teachers, and I have to tell you that I have perhaps one of the most wonderful, dedicated, caring faculty that's around. I'm very proud of them and all the things that they do. Teaching has become a very, 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 very challenging position, and I think they really, they really do it well. So I really thank all the teachers, especially in my building. What I'd like to do at today's board meeting, and I will be as quick as possible, it looks like a lot of slides, but I promise I'll race through them. I want to first give you guys a little bit of an update on some of, some of the initiatives that I discussed at the last board meeting. So I'm going to jump right into it and talk about our initiative with unauthorized electronic devices. As you know, we're a little bit ahead of the game, and it's very consistent with Governor Hokel's, you know, initiative of, where that there'll be no cell phones during the instructional day next year, starting in September. This, this is a chart that just shows where we are at this point of the year. Obviously, when we started in September, it was a big learning curve for a lot of students. So, you know, we started off the year with about, you know, 57 referrals. You know, students who are using their electronic devices, mainly their cell phones, in violation of our, our procedures. You could see that, you know, we, we've consistently, you know, made improvements. We had a little bit of a spike in, in March. I think everyone was ready for spring break at that time, to be honest with you. But, you know, we have to be careful with those numbers, especially, you know, in March and April. What we noticed within, within that data is that there were a lot of repeat offenders, so it's really not representative of the entire student body and their, their compliance with, with these, with these regulations. So, you know, we, we will be taking a look at it. My liaisons will be taking a look at it to see if we want to adjust how we're addressing it in our progressive discipline chart. And again, you know, I, I've shared this, I have been contacted by several other principals, and I've shared, I've shared the data, and they think the data looks, looks amazing. But I do want to point out that although this looks like very low numbers, it's still, if you add all this up, it's still 171 referrals throughout the school year for students who are unable to get away from their cell phones. So we're continuing, we're continuing to work on this, and you'll see it's also embedded a little bit into our SEL lessons that we're doing. So, again, just wanted to give you a quick update on that. I also want to give you an update on student attendance. Another one of our initiatives that I discussed at last meeting was, we're really trying to address chronic absenteeism, and also taking a look at ways to support our students who are not coming to school. Just looking at our attendance rate, and if you printed it out, I just want you to know that inside your community, help me, community, community diligent, is, is a new presentation with some corrected data, like if you're looking at the chart, it says, 9124 to 43024, this one says 25. There's a lot of little things that I, that I corrected. But anyway, you know, our, our goal was really to try to get back to pre-COVID, pre-pandemic, you know, attendance rates. And you could really see by the, by the chart that right now, you know, from September 1st to the end of April, you know, we're at a 91.9 daily attendance rate, which, which, you know, is, is an improvement from years past. You know, we'd still like to get back to a pre-pandemic rate, which, you know, in 1819 was about 93%. So we're working towards that goal, but I think we're doing a really good job. So those are really the only two data points I'm going to talk about tonight. What I really want to do is I want to talk about all the activities that are going on from about spring break time to the end of May. Because we often say that even though the academic calendar is winding down, things at the high school really wind up. And we've got a lot of things going on. So let me start by saying, right, right before, the week prior to spring break, our students who are pursuing the SEAL of Literacy presented, they presented on April 9th. We had 11 students successfully complete this endorsement. We had 11 students total, nine did it in Spanish, three were able to complete it in French. So that's, that's really nice. As a side note, we're also working in that same period with, with our 12th graders who are pursuing the SEAL of Civic Readiness. We're anticipating 34 students being able to complete the SEAL. And this is, and it's really a high number considering our, our graduation class size. It's really just pending one requirement right now. Well, 34 are on track. It's just a matter now of completing the thesis, which really shouldn't be a problem because we're giving them a lot of support. Okay, so the following, the following week after this was spring break, which was April 14th to April 21st. April 23rd, we started with some, some big field trips. We, our photography students went to WAMM in Woodstock, and also the Center for Photography in Kingston. This was an amazing experience that, that these students had. I gave you some information about the trip on the slide. The following day, April 24th, our ninth grade students who are in SEL groups had the opportunity to present their projects. Each group picked a topic they thought would be interesting and needed by eighth grade students, especially as they transitioned to ninth grade. And what they did was they put together different games and with themes, well, SEL themes. So I put the SEL logo and all the stuff on the right-hand side. But the things that they really focused on was conflict resolution, handling stress, healthy habits, life skills, manners, positive communication and trust, and teamwork. The eighth grade students loved working with the ninth, with the ninth graders. It was, the feedback was very positive, and it's something we want to continue and build on. The only suggestion was maybe also try to solicit some themes from the eighth graders that they might want to have addressed. But it's, it's, it's still a work in progress, and I think it's doing really well. Okay, also that week, April 25th, our AP Government and AP US History students went to the New York State Appellate Court. This, this was arranged by last year's graduation speaker. He's just so impressed with our students and, you know, how we, how we approach civic readiness skills. So really, the purpose was to attend court proceedings. They were able to meet with judges. They got private tours of the facilities. And I think what they really liked was meeting with the judges. It's a really a unique experience. Also, on April 25th, we sent all of our physics students to Six Flags. And again, that purpose was to gain experiential knowledge, physical concepts that we'll learn throughout the year, and to enjoy some roller coasters, I'm sure. The following day, our French club went to New York City. They went and saw Cirque du Soleil and explored French language and culture. It was very enjoyable for our, our students. And then finally, on April 30th, our tough students went with their mentors to the Bronx Zoo. A lot of the students had, that had participated in the program have actually really never left the area. So this was a really wonderful experience for them, and a great way for them to connect with their mentors and other, and other students. Okay, Lord Day was actually May 1st, but on May 2nd, we gave our civics and our AP Government students a really unique experience. In the morning sessions, students who had civics and AP Government in the morning were able to see a presentation and had a Q and A session with our district attorney, Emmanuel Nagy. It was really, it was really well received. It was so well received that I'm in talks with, with Emmanuel Nagy right now to be our commencement speaker at graduation. So his, his story about how he got to his position and what he stands for in a non-political way, just really, all students really got a lot out of it. It's very inspirational, and it was the students who, who said, this is, this is someone who we really think should speak at graduation. So we're in talks, I'll have, I'll have more for you, but maybe, you know, this'll, you know, put a fire under it, so. Also, in the afternoon, in the afternoon, for those afternoon classes, we had a presentation from attorney Joseph O'Connor. You know, he's very well-known in the area. The students could not get enough of him. He really, he really focused on the importance of, you know, knowing your rights, you know, fair representation. At the end of the presentations, the students just wouldn't leave. They just wanted to come up and ask more and more and more questions. So I, I think this really, it really went well. So that was May 2nd. Let's start this week. So this, May 5th to May 9th, so we just started our Spirit Week. So each, each day of the week, each class is asked to, you know, dress up based on the different themes that are in front of you. They all earn points, and those points all go towards the War of the Classes. The War of the Classes will happen on Thursday. There's all different types of, of, you know, games and events, and the students will earn points there as well. I've got to thank the Booster Club and also the Athletic Council for putting this, for putting this together. Students are really excited about that. Maybe less exciting, though, at the same time, May 5th through May 21st, we have our Advanced Placement Testing going on. This is like something almost every day of the week is, is happening here. So we have, we have currently 129 students who are, who are enrolled in 239 seats or 239 courses. Of those 239, there are 227 exams that are being, being taken. I just put this slide in just for information for you to look at later on, but you can see exactly which day, which test, and how many students are taking each test for that total of 227 exams. It, it is really remarkable. The, the students are doing really well. I just want you to know that this is the first administration that's being done dominantly digitally. So there's a lot of things that have to be ironed out, not from us, but from, from College Board. But the students are responding really well to this, to this new system. Okay. I wanted to mention on May 20th, as soon as these AP exams are finished, we have been selected by New York State. All schools are usually typically assigned to do some field testing. The purpose of the field testing really is for the state to be able to pilot some different questions that may or may not appear on future regents. So it's very, it's a very important part of the testing program, and it's something schools cannot refuse or opt out of. So we do have to administer these. So we were selected for Global History and Geography, the Enduring Issues Essay component of it, which is about a 75-minute segment. So we're required to, to test 85 of our students, so we'll do that May 20th from, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. There are some accommodations in there, that's why the time is a little off. At this, on the same date, we'll also be administering the Physics Field Test. That's only a 40-minute field test that occurs in their regularly scheduled physics class. There are no students who are taking both physics and global, so there's no, so we're not overburdening any students. The following day is our high school spring concert. We hope to see as many people there as possible. I'm sure it'll be enjoyable. It always is. The following day after the spring concert, we'll finally be able to take a little bit of a breath because we have an extended Memorial Day break, thanks to some of the snow give-back days. So, you know, we'll be out from May 22nd to May 27th. That week we return on, our 10th graders, which will be on the 29th, will have the opportunity to present their projects, their games, their SEL fair to the ninth grade group. And this will be a two-period ordeal because these games are a lot more involved, and I think, I think they're going to, I think the kids are going to absolutely love them. In fact, they've already put out the different stations to the ninth grade so that the ninth graders could sign up in advance, so that we don't get, you know, bottlenecked. Last year, we got a little, a little off because we had too many kids at certain stations, so we kind of learned from that. But anyway, they're going to be focusing on communication, cooperation, and teamwork of the effects of, of being impaired, emotional stress, harassment, teasing, and bullying, responsible decision-making, social media addiction, and also electronic devices and screen time. So really excited about that. Okay. This was an interesting initiative. Currently, our 11th graders are reading, are reading a book called The Fisherman. That's written by local author John Langen. You know, the story takes place right here in our community. It's a fictionalized account of the effects of the Ashokan Reservoir and its local feeder streams. The book features many familiar landmarks and captures the essence of the Catskill packaged in a horror tale. We've challenged several faculty members to also join the 11th grade reading the book, and we have a little over 20 faculty and staff who have agreed to read the book alongside our students. And we were fortunate enough to have John Langen, and you guys approved the ICR for him, so we appreciate it. He'll be, he'll be here on May 30th during different periods to meet with the students, discuss his book, discuss, I'm sorry, students and faculty and staff. He'll be here to discuss his book, take question, take questions about the writing process and what inspired him. And I think it's just a lovely, a lovely way for students to, to, to understand how, you know, the creative mind of an author works, and also it'll be very inspirational. So we're really grateful for Mr. Langen for, for joining us on that day. Finally, to end the month, if it couldn't end fast enough, we have our senior prom. And that will be on May 31st at the Mountain House, Antioa Mountain House, I should say. So we're really looking for that prom. Prom tickets are, are selling right now, and they're doing real, and they're doing really well. There was another slide that's in the original packet that I took out, and that was just, that was kind of like a reminder about some early regents testing, but I think it's just too much to talk about now, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I omitted that slide. What I did do, however, is on the next two slides, I just gave you just a brief summary of all the events in order of what's going on in the month of May, and I also on that last slide kind of gave you the June dates also, because I think it's important that you come to all of our events. So now you have everything with all the dates that have changed, and this is most up-to-date. So I spoke very quickly. I did 25 minutes, sorry. But any questions, concerns, feedback? Yes? I'm sorry.
And I'm kind of embarrassed that I have to ask you this, but the AP testing, so that's eligibility to go into high school AP classes? Is that, tell me what the, I don't know what, or it's for college?
So that's the culminating exam of any advanced placement course that students have taken through the year. It's just that they end their courses in May, but the exams have a significance, especially when we're looking at colleges, depending on which college. And it's very complicated, but in general, you know, students who are achieving like a three, four, or five, those are the three highest scores, are typically able to get courses waived in college by showing that they've completed the courses.
So that I understand, so it's about, it's basically a good thing for college applications and maybe even placing out of some classes? Okay, now I understand. I just didn't know what it was.
Yeah, no, it is a great opportunity, but I feel bad having to say this, but I will, is, you know, the test shouldn't define everything in the course because we do encourage, we have open enrollment, and we do encourage students, if they're interested in expanding their knowledge in an area, go ahead and take the course, you know?
Any other questions? Trustee Knutson?
I just wanted to ask about, going back to the electronic devices referrals, and you mentioned there's like sort of a smaller group of kids who really have a hard time with the policy. And I was curious if you had any knowledge of whether, when those kids are referred a second or third time? Is their attitude toward the policy that it's just a nonsense policy that they're just getting caught up in, and so what if I get caught because I don't believe in this? Or do they really understand the rationale behind it? And are they, I just wonder if communicating better to them what's going on in their brains with having these devices in school?
So I think in the beginning of the year, it was more, you know, I don't agree with this, I'm not going to do it. I think that our student body, and I know there were some articles published in the school newspaper, and students were quoted as saying, you know, this was a good thing, like, we needed this. I do think that there is a real addiction. I, you know, now we hear things such as, you know, I was just looking, I was just looking at what time it is. Okay, but you also requested clocks be placed everywhere, which we did. We put clocks outside for them, we put additional clocks in the hallway, in every classroom. I think that there's still a handful of parents who still text their kids during the school day. You know, those students who have anxiety and really need to use their phones, I think they've done an amazing job. They will ask their teacher to go to guidance. Our school counselors will always let our kids use their phones, you know, in a private area. We're just trying to make it accept, you know, appropriate. So, but I think it's a real challenge. It's a real challenge, and I think that, I think we've done a disservice to our children. I said that last time. We're just too reliant on these devices.
Thank you.
Thanks so much for your presentation. I just want to, I guess, show my appreciation for the innovative way that the students are using the SEL lessons. It's really remarkable.
Thank you for your support.
On to item 3.01. May I have a motion to enter into executive session to consult with legal counsel, discuss matters related to the employment of a particular employee, and review the confidential staff agreement? Trustee Good, Cheepers, trustee Goodrich, and second trustee Ramondo, so sorry, all in favor? We'll be back in about an hour.
We are back from executive session. May I have a motion to exit executive session and return to the public session? Trustee Armando, second trustee Jerome, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. We will open the hearing on the budget. Sorry. I'm just gonna put my glasses on. So here we are, May 6th. This is the culmination of the budget presentations for the '25-'26 school year. It has been a pleasure going through this process with all of you, and I appreciate all of the time and effort that you've put into listening to me, asking questions, and yeah, here we go. So for '25-'26 proposed budget, as a note for '24-'25 currently, our budget is $62,325,500. We are looking at a '25-'26 budget of $63,558,660, which is an increase of a little over 1.2 million, or 2.03 percent. In addition, we are looking to use a little over 2.5 million as appropriate fund balance to help reduce the tax levy and balance the budget. So as far as our budget highlights, we are continuing all of the great work that that all of our administrators and our faculty and staff have done with replacement of technology, active learning spaces, homework help, extracurricular, our multi-tiered system of support, reading and math training for staff, professional learning in math literacy and science. Of special note is we're happy that we're able to have our summer skills academy again this summer, and we are continuing funding the mental health support for our students. The levy currently is $48,434,118. We are proposing a 2% increase for '25-'26 for a total of $49,402,800, which is below the allowable tax levy limit that we calculated using the formula that we are required to use when calculating it. As another side note, we are also proud of the fact that, given that CPI, the Consumer Price Index has been higher than normal these last few years, that we were still able to keep our tax levy to a 2% increase. The budget components that we are required to show our taxpayers consists, again, a majority of instruction and benefits. That is pretty typical of every school district. And then we also have general support at a little over 3.7%, operations and maintenance, five and a half, and then transportation, just under 10, with the remaining, just shy of 2% being attributed to the debt service, the community service, which is our public libraries, and the inner fund transfers that go to our different funds. Just breaking out the benefits for active employees and retirees, you can see that retirees make up 10% of our entire budget. The three-part budget, we presented this the last time too, just shows that a majority of the monies that are spent to the district are spent for programs. They are spent directly for the students, for their instruction, for their success moving forward, with just shy of a little over 9.9% for capital, and then 10.22% for administrative. So what happens if the budget fails on May 20th? So if the budget fails, then the district has an option. It would be up to the Board of Ed whether they would resubmit the same budget, submit a different budget, or go to a contingency budget. If they decided to submit the same or a different budget, it would go to the voters on June 17th. That is the date that any school district who has to do a second vote would be voting. If we do go to a second vote and it's defeated the second time, the district would be required to go to contingency. And the contingency rules basically say that you cannot raise your taxes in '25-'26 any more than you had in '24-'25. So as I said, our '24-'25 tax levy was a little over 48 million. We're proposing '25-'26 at a little over 49. So our contingency would bring it back down to that 48, so we would still need to find $968,000 in reductions to the budget in order to meet the requirements of contingency. Other rules that apply in contingency is that we would not be able to purchase any equipment. There is approximately $225,000 in the budget for equipment. There is also an administrative component cap, so the percentage of that budget, that pie chart that I showed you, cannot be larger as a percentage of the budget as it was in the previous year. And then fees would also be charged to organizations that would use our facilities. So ballot proposition one, '25-'26 budget, be it resolved that the Ontario Central School District Board of Ed be and hereby authorized to expend the sum set forth under the various headings which are voted upon in gross and not in detail in the total amount of $63,588,660, which includes $20,000 to support public library for the year commencing July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, and that the board is authorized to levy and collect the necessary tax thereof on the taxable property of the district. So that is how it will read when you go to vote. And I will not read ballot proposition number two. I think we've gone over this enough. If anybody needs more details on this, please let me know. But ballot proposition two is the proposition for the bond for capital improvements. It would allow a $70.5 million capital project, of which $15 million would be cash reserves in cash, and allow the district to borrow an amount not to exceed $55,500,000. In addition, there are two board seats that are up with terms from July 1 to June 30. Three candidates will appear on the ballot in this order. There will be a get-to-know-the-candidate's night here in the middle school, high school auditorium, May 15th at 6:00 p.m., and this event will be moderated by the League of Women Voters. So next, May 20th. So voting will take place from 2 to 9:00 p.m. at the Bennett and Woodstock schools. For those of you who are not aware, that the elementary school will be dismissing at 1 o'clock those days. Registered voters can vote at either location or by early mail voting. And so you can go to our website to find the instructions for early mail voting, and also absentee voting. And as I said, if for some reason we need a revote, that would occur on June 17th. So we just ask that all of you that can go out and vote. Any questions? Do we open questions to the audience as well?
Yes, we do.
Does anybody have any questions? Board trustees, or anyone in the audience? Yes, Mr. Wolf. Sure. Okay, so when we said that the bond is going to be tax neutral, what we are saying is, is that the debt payment, kind of similar to your mortgage, will be an annual payment of roughly $3.9 million. Excuse me if my numbers aren't exact, I don't have it in front of me. And that will be an annual payment that will come out of the budget. However, because we would be consolidating, we would be saving over $3 million a year. So those are $3 million that are not going to be in the budget. In addition to that, we will be receiving revenue of approximately $1.3 million a year based on that project. So it's a net of, basically, it's going to be less than zero, but, so that's why we say tax neutral. Just on the bond piece, correct. That is just on the bond piece, that's, yes. Can I just ask, the $1.3 million, where is that coming from? So that is building aid that comes from the state, and it's expense-driven aid. So it's aid that we receive because we are spending money on a capital project. So we are actually getting the aid on the whole $70 million, even though we're only bonding $50 million, or 55. Any other questions? Trustee Goodrich?
So I see we have some seniors here, and if any of them are 18, can they vote?
They can.
And what kind of, what do they need to be able to vote?
I will let the district clerk answer that one. What seniors that are 18 need to do to vote?
That was your question, Clark. Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
So for the seniors that are here that are 18 years old, what do they, if they may not be on the voter rolls, what would they need to prove they're 18 so they can vote?
So for anyone who is not a registered voter, you can register to vote through Board of Elections at Ulster County. If you do not do that before the election and you still wish to vote, you can fill out something called an affidavit ballot at the voting location, and I will confirm that you are an eligible voter the following day, and we'll count your vote at the next board meeting when we certify all of the votes.
All you seniors get that? If not, reach out to Amanda tomorrow. Any other questions or comments? Trustee Knutson?
This is also just a question for the students. Can you, so some, I realize some of our students may not know, when you say a capital project, what the word, because the word capital has many different meanings. In this definition, am I correct, that a capital project is money that is used to build facilities, actually build, construct, correct?
It's construction, reconstruction, yes, it's what, it is, you're right, it's a school term. It's interesting, when you've done this for as many decades as I have, it's kind of become second nature. So the capital project would be work that, work that's a large dollar amount, basically. That's to fix, renovate, improve facilities. So for those of you that have not had a chance to look at what some of the designs look like, if you go to the Ontario website and you look at the optimizing Ontario page, there are some beautiful renderings of what the potential work could look like. And I have to say, our architects did a very nice job when they created those renderings. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, we will close the public hearing on the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presentation is
Our next presentation is with Julianne Ross Kleinman from Ulster Bowses, and she'll present
How did you get that back in there? There we go. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us back. Yes, I'm Julianne Ross Kleinman. I am the supervisor of instructional services at Ulster Bowses. About February, we were here presenting, discussing the importance of policies in place for the use of A I. And at that time, I'm sure we discussed, or shared, a disclaimer, saying that because A I. initiatives are moving so quickly, whatever we share today might change tomorrow. And that actually did happen. Earlier this year, the Consortium for School Networking, or COSIN, and the Association of Educational Services Agencies, A E S A, put out a call for A I. lead trainers. This is all part of a national initiative to build capacity in K through twelve schools for the thoughtful and strategic implementation of generative artificial intelligence, or Gen A I. I'm excited to share that I was selected as one of the lead trainers for this important program. As part of the program, I'll be trained, and I've actually started my training already, to support school districts in using the A I. maturity readiness assessment tool. This is designed by COSIN, which helps assess readiness and guide planning for responsible A I. integration. This initiative is part of the Building Capacity for Generative A I. in K through twelve Education Project, which is led by COSIN, A E S A, and it's in collaboration with the State Educational Technology Directors Association and the School Superintendent's Association, and is generously funded by the Bill Gates, Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. So if you look at the screen, you'll see that the key grant objectives are educating educators, providing comprehensive training to teachers on the capabilities and the limitations of generative A I., including how to integrate them into existing curriculum and differentiate instruction for diverse learners. The grant objective is also to assess readiness in districts, helping schools evaluate their current technological infrastructure and identify areas where improvements are needed to successfully adopt generative A I. tools. The grant and objectives also include developing implementation plans, guiding schools and creating strategic plans for integrating generative A I., considering factors like pedagogical goals, student needs, and potential challenges. Promoting ethical use, addressing concerns related to data privacy, potential biases in A I. algorithms, and ensuring responsible use of generative A I. tools in the classroom. And finally, building capacity for ongoing learning. This is a marathon, not a sprint. Fostering a culture of continuous professional learning, enabling educators to stay updated on the emerging advancements in generative A I. and best practices for its application in education. COSIN and A E S A, A I. Lead Trainer Program, is designed to build capacity for integrating generative A I., as I said before, in K through twelve education through a structured train-the-trainer model. Initially, twelve lead trainers were selected. I am one of two in New York State. More trainers, more, sorry, regional trainers are being selected. They're looking for approximately forty regional trainers. They recently found and selected, I believe, twenty. And there will be ongoing train-the-trainer programs where lead trainers will then be responsible for conducting four regional train-the-trainer sessions, during which they will train approximately a total of forty regional trainers and about ten trainers per session. The regional trainers and then the lead trainers can now, after receiving all the training, will be able to deliver training to local school districts focusing on specifically underserved populations and rural areas. So why are we doing this? First, I want to share that the slides were shared with us when we were receiving our training. So you're going to see some really interesting pictures and things that kind of related to cartoons as to the way in which we were trained. But why are we doing this? The idea was that we are navigating a new frontier. And if you look at the picture, you see that A I. is not really perfect yet. We're also looking at the fact that, and I looked this up because I was curious, two thousand and sixteen is when the World Economic Forum decided that we are in the fourth industrial revolution, and that Klaus Schwab put out the book in regards to the fourth industrial revolution, that we are now really integrating and working with technology, the physical parts, and also the machine learning. We also look at this because we go through a cycle of learning that Gardner says is the hype cycle. It's to help people understand what is real and what is just hype. Gardner says that there are five stages to this cycle. It's like a roadmap that shows how new technologies like A I. tools move from those exciting buzz terms to real classroom value. The five stages are the innovation trigger, where people start to feel like, wow, this is new, this is really exciting. But then you hit that peak of inflated expectations, where people are starting to say, this is amazing. But then you start to go down into the trough of disillusionment, where people start to say, wait, this isn't as easy or as perfect as we thought. We then move into the slope of enlightenment, where we're starting to see the actual value of A I. and how it works and what actually does work well. And right now, they're saying that we are in the plateau of productivity. This is now useful and widely adopted. In K through twelve, this helps educators figure out which A I. tools are worth trying versus which ones need more time to mature. Some A I. tools are already making a real impact in classrooms. According to the latest hype cycle, tools like generative A I., Chat G P T., and A I. augmented learning are moving closer to the productivity phase. And that means that teachers are using them to personalize learning, like helping students get individualized writing feedback. But schools are also starting to use A I. tutors or practice apps to support students outside classroom hours. Educators don't need to wait for the perfect. Some of these tools are already classroom-ready, but educators need to be cautious and at the same time, curious. Not every A I. tool is ready for primetime. For example, there is emotional A I., technology that guesses how students feel. I don't know how I feel about that. That is still in the early stages, and it sounds cool to some people, but it is not reliable. Some tools might raise concerns about bias, privacy, or accuracy. As an educator, it's okay to be cautious, ask questions like, who built this? What data does it collect? And how will it help students? Just a few more whys. Why are we looking at this? In January twenty twenty-five, a research report almost stated that almost all companies invest in A I., but just one percent believe that they are at the maturity level of using A I. Research finds that the biggest barrier to scaling is not employees who are ready, but leaders who are not steering fast enough. If you take a look at the pictures, you can see that three percents, three times more employees are using generative A I. for a third or more of their work, more than their leaders imagine. If you take a look at the next picture, it shows you that ninety-two percent of companies plan to invest in A I. between now and the next three years, but one percent, again, still believe that they have reached that maturity level. So the question is, is the district ready? Do you currently understand and evaluate the potential of generative A I. in enhancing both instructional and operational aspects? Is there a district-wide plan to implement generative A I.? And how are you managing vendor relationships, both current and future, that use A I. in their products? So through my training, I learned about the A I. toolkit. Oops, let's go back. Washington, D C. in twenty twenty-four April, COSIN announced the launch of the K through twelve generative A I. maturity tool, a comprehensive resource developed in collaboration with the Council of Great City Schools, supported by Amazon Web Services and endorsed by supporting partners, including, as I said before, school superintendents, the National Association of Secondary School Principals, the National School Boards Association, the National School, Public School Relations, and so on, the State Education Technology Directors Association. The tool aims to revolutionize, revolutionize, how school districts across the nation approach the adaption or adoption, sorry, of artificial intelligence technologies. It's broken into seven domains, and within the domains, there are subdomains. Always suggested to start with the executive leadership domain. You can work these domains at different times, and you can work them simultaneously, but it is always suggested to start at the executive leadership domain, because that's where you're talking about the strategy, your policy, who is part of the stakeholders group, so this is where you start. And like I said, this executive leadership domain is broken down even more from the subdomain to the elements, looking at the alignment with educational objectives, monitoring performance metrics, and financial considerations. So when I was saying before about what level is something at, when you're looking at the A I. general maturity toolkit, the levels start with unknown. So what happens is we would sit down together and have conversation, and we would go through the rubric together and see where you feel you fit in the different domains. Are you at the emerging level, the developing stage, or are you at the mature level? When you're at the developing stage or the mature level, that is when you're showing evidence. And evidence could be policies that you have in place already, evidence could be the tools that you're already using. But to be in the developing or the mature stage or level, that is when you're showing evidence. This is just a quick slide of what the breakdown looks like for strategy-specific and the Along with that, it has recommendations, but the recommendations actually come from a roadmap that we put together, together. You start at your current state with a plan of moving to what you want as your future state. There is gap analysis, and together we build a roadmap to decide how to do that. This is a quick picture of what the self-assessment survey looks like. You would identify in each domain, in each element, where you are, and then you would prioritize what you want to do first to move towards your future state. There's always a problem statement. It helps to find, it helps to make sure that everyone is on the same page, that everybody understands the needs to be solved, the consequences for their organization if they are not addressed, and how to communicate the path moving forward to everyone in the agency. The idea is that this is not one person, that this is a group of stakeholders. So facilitating a group to develop and agree upon the shared problem statement will help generate what you see forward, specifically that roadmap towards the next level. And then finally, an A I. maturity improvement roadmap is a structured, strategic plan. So I don't really want to say that I'm here to help guide you with a policy. I'm not. I'm really here to see where you are right now and to help move you to your future state by gathering artifacts and evidence, and then coming together with a plan. See what work is working well and see what we need to do to move forward. The strategic plan outlines the milestones, the initiatives, and the key actions necessary to achieve a district's maturity goals over a defined period of time. It aligns all adoptions with educational and operational priorities, ensuring responsible, effective, and equitable implementation. So we are hoping that you would be interested in piloting this program with me. All lead A I. trainers have the opportunity to pilot with a district for free. This is actually a paid service. We would go into a contract for free. And again, like I said, this is a marathon, not a sprint, so it is considered that this is something that would be ongoing. I would continue to receive training and work with other lead A I. trainers, regional trainers, and we would continue to refine, and we would continue to work with you. So that's the proposal. Thank you. Does anyone have a question?
Questions for Julianne? Trustee Lynch?
Thank you very much. Just curious about the timeline. I recognize, as you just said, it's a marathon, but curious what the pilot timeline looks like.
Whatever we decide it could be. So if we said we wanted to maybe get started in September, we can start work now, we could start work over the summer. But what we would do first is I sit with the group and I walk you through the rubric, and we're gathering information within there, along with your parameters of what you would like to do first and what you feel is a reasonable timeframe. So do you mean what might be a reasonable timeframe for all of that or specific pieces?
Both, actually, but I should have been more specific. I'm looking back at the strategy page in your presentation and just the idea of having sort of robust infrastructure, I think, is key. So recognizing the pilot itself. So recognizing the pilot itself would be something that you would are obviously generously offering for free. But at the same time, I'm just thinking about the resources involved in terms of the timeline. Who would need to be around the table and our administrators? And what the best timeline is for their involvement, that kind of thing.
It is definitely suggested that it is a stakeholder group of administrators. And that's why it suggests that we start with executive leadership, that we have that conversation. And then technology should be at the table. I think the way the table is here, a student should be at the table. Teachers, different levels should be at the table. But it's up to, I'm here to help guide you and give you suggestions. And I can show you some models of what other districts are doing around the nation and how they're organizing and structuring it. But it's all individualized. And so the time would be my time coming here to work with the stakeholders group, depending on how we structured it and outlined it. But that's part of my learning and growth and commitment that Olster Boces has made for me to take on this role for the nation. So I continue to go out and receive training and train others. And moving forward, then we would be doing this and offering this to other districts. But we all felt it was important as this is new. So all of the lead trainers said, we want to have a school where we can pilot this. So we can come back and refine, so we can come back and have discussions. So the timeframe is really what you consider the time, timeframe is.
Trustee Jerome?
I appreciate the very balanced and linear presentation that you gave. Although I would say that this AI situation is like happening all at once everywhere. It's, I look at those buckets and I think, ha, ha, ha. We'll start with number one, that's really not accurate. However, I do think that there's an argument for having somebody, since it is so complex and it is blossoming, whether on an operational administrative level or in our classrooms ourselves. Like, that's one distinction. I'm sure that you're, those are two different places where a district is going to play. And to have, to be sort of held accountable with a program like this, to keep having the conversation, to keep exploring these things, and help sort through the, the mess and the potential that is AI could be, could be helpful.
I could also share that at Olster Boces, we have an AI circle that is starting in October and running through, through the year. So I could even see if there was a cohort, and we're asking for a cohort of four people, administrators and teachers as well, for the AI circle, that is also free for our component districts. I see that falling in the academic AI literacy readiness, where teachers are working with us at Boces asynchronously. We are coming into the district to work in classrooms and then going through that project-based learning, celebration of learning towards the end of the year. So I could see if I were here specifically helping with the maturity rubric. But I could also see at the same time, and hope to see at the same time, educators working with Educator Edge and Olster Boces through our AI circle, where it's more hands-on lesson plan, lesson planning, you know, in the classroom modeling. So those things could most definitely happen simultaneously to help people navigate AI.
Trustee Goodrich?
So we were at a Rural Schools Association meeting up in Lake Placid. We saw a presentation on AI. I'll be frank, it scared me. And I've been working in computers for 45 years. It literally scared me. Okay, they showed two foils, two slides with a list of jobs that will, it will significantly impact.
Yes.
Paralegal. And, you know, they have an 80/20 rule. So a paralegal can come in, ask AI to do a, a legal brief, and it will write it. And 80% of it is good enough, and they'll have to rewrite the other 20%, right? So it's going to impact a lot of jobs. So for the seniors here, you have to know which jobs it's going to impact more than others when you choose your career. And you could probably ask AI which one it's going to impact more than others. All right, it will tell you. So it's, it's kind of a scary situation. But on the other hand, you know, I've seen a demo where it worked real-time, interactively with a student to solve an algebra problem. Very interesting. I mean, it was good. It was really good. Probably better than a teacher could do, right? And so I like to see real live examples. When we, because it, it really drives it home. When you do a high-level presentation like this, I walk away with, you know, what is it all about? But when I see real live examples, it, it helps. Thank you.
You're welcome. And so part of me wants to like rip this apart and just like jump on the internet and do an example real quick. And then the other part of me says, so two years ago, if someone said that I would be standing up here having a conversation with dry mouth about AI, I would say no, because I was also afraid of it. I was the last of my friends who was really touching it. But because it is kind of frightening, is even more reason why we need to make sure that our students understand how to use it safely, appropriately. We, as adults, need to know how to share it and use it safely and appropriately. We don't want to leave our students behind, because you're absolutely right. That's the jobs now, that's the jobs in the future. But we need to make sure that we're safeguarding them, just like we did with the internet or anything else that comes, it's another tool. But this tool is so different. It is, it is touching our cars, right? Driverless cars. It is touching algorithms and just about everything from Netflix to just about anything you can imagine. And so we really have to make sure that we're sharing that and sharing that safely. And so that everyone knows how to use it and use it safely. I don't think we want to ignore it. And yeah, we should be a little afraid of it. Even more reason to make sure that we're educating on it. So I agree with you, because it was something I didn't want to touch a few years ago. I can't believe I'm standing here now.
Trustee Knudsen?
Yeah, I think I said this to you last time you were here too. But the, the one that I see on this slide that I'm really concerned about is 7.3, which is ethical AI use and policy. And just because I'm old, older than all of you youngsters in the audience. So I've been around since the dawn of the internet age. And the pattern has been, that I've observed, we've, we've been in this era of just rapid technological advancement for, you know, a couple of decades now. And we actually went at the, at the NISBA conference in New York. They had also a presentation on, on AI. And that speaker said that, I thought this was a bit of a gaudy claim, but he said he thought that there would be as much technological innovation in the next 10 years as there has been in the previous 100. Now, the previous 100 had a lot of technical innovation. And so what the pattern has been is that the technology is developing so fast that it outpaces the legal and ethical frameworks that we can build to, you know, if the government wants to pass laws for regulation, they're 10 years behind. By the time the law is written, the technology has completely changed, right?
Yes.
But what we have in our district is young people who are trying to figure out how to be ethical human beings. And we're putting this, this incredibly powerful tool is available to them. So I'm wondering, like, in terms of the training you've had, how much of it is ethics? Because to me, that's sort of the piece that we need to get to our students right away.
I think one of the reasons I was chosen is because I was the district data coordinator and the data privacy officer at Olster Boces. So when we're talking about safeguarding, ethics, ed law 2D, and I've betrayed a lot through our RIC, through multiple, let's see. I've had training through MIT. I've had some training through Harvard. I've had some training through COSIN before, ISTI, International Society for Technology and Education. I was doing the AI and GM program about five, six years ago, when people, we weren't really, maybe even longer, when people really weren't looking at that. So that has always been a concern of mine. And I think, like I said, maybe that's one of the reasons I was chosen, because I do bring that up to the forefront. And I think it's important, as you said, when we're put, so yes, we keep going in this, these patterns in education and the, here are the Chromebooks, here are the smart boards, here are the, this. We got to go, we got, it's really fast, we got to move, we got to do it. This is here, not just in our schools, it's in our world. Even more reason why we want to have that media literacy approach. We did, oh, and my dissertation is on the computer science standards and digital literacy standards. So within that is the ethics of that as well. So making sure even through dissertation, all the things that you have to do to go through IRB and all the information about safeguarding. So this is something that has been in, I've been working on for multiple years and will continue to do, because you're right. We could put something on paper right now and it can change tomorrow. So it's not just really putting it on paper. It's having those conversations regularly. Those milestones, those touchpoints, those benchmarks. Because you can't just put something down on paper and never look at it again because things are going to change. But at the same time, we have to put something down because everyone has to have the same vocabulary and the same language. And we have to decide what that is because we have to share it. And then if we have to share it again, that's okay. But we have to start somewhere to do that.
Trustee Armando?
This dry mouth is not going to get any, any better, but I'll keep answering.
I'm going to say it super quick. You summarized it. You summarized it when you said it's about being cautious but curious. So that summarizes it very well. And I just want to thank you. And we're very, I'm very grateful on our behalf that you're choosing us to be your pilot school. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, Julianne, I just have a question for you. Because the last time you were here, we were sort of trying to mull over how do we even accept or present a, an AI policy? And I think you said that you would, with, with, working with you, we would have your support in developing a policy. And I'm really looking forward to that. And just also very grateful that you're involving our district in this great work.
I think the work that you're already doing, the questions that you're already asking, says this is the place to be. I'm honored that you invited me here again, or Olster Boces here again, to have this conversation with you. There's so much I could share, so much we could talk about. I understand it's a board meeting, and so to try to have brevity. But the next steps, where I think we're really going to see things moving, is our conversations sitting collectively at the table. But that's the point. It has to be collectively at the table. I'm your guest, I'm your guide, this is your school. This is your district. How does this work for you? Not anybody else. How does it work for you and how do we go at your pace? So the next thing would be, yep, letting me know if this is something that you would be interested in doing. And then we would start to put the pieces together. So, thank you.
But just to say that this, I always like to talk about our values and our mission here. And we are, we do have students and we're a student body that can sit with each other and discuss things at a table. That's the real in-life peace that we pride ourselves on. And we are also not afraid of the future. We are not stuck in the past. So this lines very clearly with our stated goals. And I always like to remind ourselves and other people that that's what this district is standing for right now.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. I just wanted to check in with the board. We have a lot to discuss tonight. And in, because of that, I think there may be one particular item that we will all want to do a roll call, vote on. But for the other items that are more, you know, our regular business, I'm going to just ask all in favor? Any opposed? Okay? All right, great, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the April 22nd, 2025 and the April 28th, 2025 meetings. May I have a first? Trustee Armando, second trustee Jerome? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have our superintendent's district news.
Good evening. I wanted to begin by acknowledging that it is Teacher and Nurse Appreciation Week. So I want to express my gratitude to our entire, onto our Teachers Association, which encompasses our nurses as well. This group of dedicated individuals are in large part what makes this district special. They support our students academically and physically, but in reality, in so many additional ways. Having a positive experience in school is what creates a spark of inspiration in our students. Finding a way to help a student learn, which may be different from each of their classmates, sets the stage for that student to become a lifelong learner and to believe that they can achieve the life they want. This allows our students to dream and then realize their dreams. So thank you to each and every one of our teachers and nurses. And also, last week was Principal Appreciation Day. So we appreciated them last week. But just to note, they are also highly appreciated. On the agenda tonight, we added a couple of Boces field trips. We were notified today that we have students attending two overnight Boces field trips. We had not received the information in time to have the trips appear on the agenda as it was printed on Friday. But we are adding them so that our insurance coverage can extend to our students while they're away. And we wish them great success on those trips. I want to thank the many community members who attended our community meeting in this building two weeks ago and the community meeting that we held at Woodstock Elementary last week. Special thanks to the Woodstock PTA for providing the childcare for the meeting at Woodstock, which undoubtedly allowed more parents to attend than would otherwise have been able to. And also for the volunteering to run around with the microphone so that all of the speakers could be heard. Thank you also to the facilitator, Cassidy Nacello, who helped to guide us through the evening. I really appreciate everyone who has joined us to hear about the proposed project and to ask questions and gather information so that we can have a district of informed voters. Coming up, and we have additional meetings. Last night, actually, we attended the Shandaken Town Board meeting. And we have coming up meetings with the Wittenberg Sportsman Club, the Olive Senior Group. And then we will also be at the Olive, Hurley, and Woodstock Town Board meetings. And as Ms. LeClare mentioned in the budget presentation, Meet the Candidates Night will be May 15th at 6:00 PM. That will be here in the auditorium. And that is always well-moderated by the League of Women Voters. And we appreciate that because it really allows our community to get to know the candidates. In Communications, our budget newsletter is going to be mailed out, I believe, at the end of this week. And there will be a special capital project insert. So that has a lot of information that goes to every district resident. Our communications team is also working on editing a video that will be shared with our community and doing continued social media posts. I just want to reinforce, we're hoping that all of our residents vote on May 20th or by early mail ballot. We're also going to be, we are working with our principals to find space in each of the buildings. And we're going to, as a central administration team, spend the day being available for faculty and staff to come and discuss the budget and the propositions. So on May 12th, we are looking to be in the elementary buildings. We're going to divide and conquer. And then on May 19th, we will be here in the middle high school. So the OTA leadership has graciously offered to also gather any questions from members who may be unable to stop by who may be unable to stop by and see us on those days and then they will share those questions with us so that we can provide any additional information that they need. As a note, I'm sure many of you have noticed that our middle school principal, Mr. Dedana, will be leaving Antioa at the end of May. His resignation is on our agenda this evening. He has accepted a position with another school district, so we thank him for all of his work in our middle school and wish him much success in his next role. Our plan for the short term is that Ms. Fallow will work with Mr. Dedana through the remainder of his time with us and then she will assume the role of principal of the middle school through the end of June. We did meet with the middle school faculty last week to share this plan and we will be sending out a parent and guardian letter tomorrow so that everyone is aware of the situation and who they can contact. And last but not least, we will be adding an item onto our agenda this evening that is an agreement with the purchaser, purchaser of our West Hurley property. And this agreement is a commitment that will bring the sale of the property to closure within the next 120 days.
Any trustees have questions for the superintendent? Trustee Lynch?
Could I just ask you to reiterate, first of all, thank you for making yourself available pretty much every single day in the month of May to help educate all of us in our community about this vote. You mentioned two new dates, I think, for the teachers, staff, and was it students as well or just teachers and staff?
So we're gonna be available for the teachers and staff on May 12th and May 19th and we have worked with, I've had conversations with our high school principal and the video that we are creating that is informational, that is going to be shared with the public, will also be shared with our students during one of their classes during the day.
Got it. Thank you, thanks for clarifying. And thanks again for making that happen.
Any other questions? All right, do any trustees have, Board District News to report? Trustee Lynch?
Thank you, yes. I just, picking up on, on these community meetings, I just wanted to really thank the community as well as the administration and the board members who participated in so many conversations. I just think it's so important right now that we have the opportunity to connect as a community because as we all know, the last few years have been, you know, both highs and lows in terms of some of the division that we felt around the community. And I can speak for myself as an elementary parent, that, you know, this is the, the community that's being impacted the most is these, the elementary school kids from K through six, really. And I really want to acknowledge how hard it is to be coming into a community or coming into a school district with such optimism and excitement and be faced with a global pandemic, right? To be faced with school closures, to be faced with so much change. And I really just want to acknowledge how hard that has been for all of us. And I really can't thank the teachers enough. I think you've held steady through so much change and I am so grateful for so many of you, for both personally, but also just for our district. Because a lot of the change and implementation has been put on your shoulders and I think we are all indebted to your professionalism and your ability to carry the load, whether that literally means carry boxes, as we moved and integrated our Phoenisha School into Bennett, or whether that means just carrying that, that emotional load for your own professional lives, the changes in the community that you have with your colleagues and the children in your classrooms. So I just want to, I really want to thank you for all of that. I also just want to make sure that in reaction to what I heard, I went to a couple of different community meetings, but I, I heard still a lot of questions and my intention was to be there to listen, which is obviously important as we think about the decisions that we're making here. But it's also really important that there is an understanding that this is quite a unique administration, that they are literally willing to take your calls by the ones. If you have a specific conversation that you'd like to have about your bus route, you can do that. Like tomorrow morning, you could call the superintendent or anybody on, on this dais, but, or just, you know, the Director of Transportation, whatever it is that you're concerned about. This is an important time to have those questions answered because there's a ton of information and again, a ton of change and I would submit a lot of worry or fear or concern. And I think it's really important that you take the opportunity to get your own specific questions answered. I had the, as you all know, unfortunate, well, not fortunate, it was a huge responsibility to be asked to, to make a vote on the May resolution in 2023. And at that time, you may recall if you were paying attention, that I had asked the president of the board at that time to consider splitting the vote because there was no question that a central campus was already made, it was made very clear by the Ad-Hoc Committee and others that this was the right thing to do. The question for me in that moment was about the implementation of it. We had at that point, you remember, no budget planning. We hadn't had the opportunity to do the visioning as a community yet. We had no implementation plan for integrating Phoenisha into Bennett at that time. I had asked if we could split that, that resolution to have a clear, clear vote on the central campus and then another on the other components of it. And it, that didn't, that didn't fly at the time, fine, but I therefore had to vote no, even though I said publicly that a central campus makes sense. Here we are, two years later, we have had the benefit of budget planning, we have the benefit of visioning exercises with tons of community input and we have an implementation plan and we've seen what works and what doesn't because we've had the benefit of integrating Phoenisha into Bennett and those kids are doing well. So I, I just want to make it very clear that the resolution in and of itself says that voter authorization to fund such a project is what is required. That project is the centralization, it's the capital project, as, as Ms. Leclaire just explained, that is the buildings. The capital project is the buildings that we're talking about in the Boysville campus, that's what we're voting on. You can make your own decision whether you want to vote on that capital project, but that is what is being required. And in my work, we talk about this often, clear is kind. Be kind to each other and explain what this vote is about. There are a thousand kids in this district depending on it. Do your research, ask your questions and please take advantage of all of the time that these, all of us are putting into this and some of you here in the audience as well at all of these forums. Educate yourselves, educate your parents, educate your friends. There's a lot at stake here for the future of the community. And I really do think that our, our, our elementary parents deserve the patience and deserve the opportunity to have all of their questions answered because we can actually have really innovative conversations with them at the table in the future, right? There was a question that came up the other night where a parent said, I don't want my kid on a bus for 15, 51 minutes. Can I do something about that? Immediately Assistant Superintendent Leclaire said, yes, call me, we can do something about that. We might even add a bus route if it doesn't make sense. We are willing to adjust and change. Nothing is baked. Have the conversation, ask the question, you deserve that time and that space. This is a hard and in a really important time in our lives to create the kind of community we want to have. So thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other Board District News?
I'd like to share some information with the community. I noticed that recently there has been some concern from some of our community members about the lack of an economic impact study as part of the 2023 Board of Education and Administration's due diligence around the development of the resolution to move to a central campus by September 2028. Based on those concerns raised on social media and also at our community forums, I reached out for the advice of our attorneys, or I'm sorry, our legal counsel. I asked if we should have done an impact study or if we still need to, covering all legal bases and continuing to do our due diligence. I can't share the actual email with you because I would be breaching attorney-client privilege, but I can share with you my understanding of, of their response. My understanding is that school districts are not required to conduct economic impact studies on surrounding businesses prior to the closing of a school building and school districts also can't expend funds in the, in the, for, in the primary benefit if the, sorry, if the primary benefit is for private parties. So an economic impact study that measures impacts on private businesses would likely not be a proper expenditure of district funds. And there's another issue that I, I just wanted to also share some information about. So this, this came, has come up on, also on social media and it came up as a direct question in our, our forum last week at Woodstock. And the person asked, is the potential for a newly elected Board of Education to overturn a current resolution? And the superintendent, Superintendent McLaren briefly addressed the question when it was asked and stated that the Commissioner, the Commissioner of Education in the state of New York may not allow that to happen. So Superintendent McLaren asked that very question of our attorneys in February of 2023. And again, I'm not sharing the actual email, but I'm going to paraphrase, paraphrase my understanding. My understanding is that a new board may reverse prior board's decisions, but only if the new board has a rational basis for that decision, which usually means the new board has to conduct its own thorough investigation into data, deliberate over that data, and then develop a reasonable basis for the change. It is also my understanding that the Commissioner has reversed a new board's decision when that board came in and immediately reversed a prior board without having conducted any research or deliberation to support the change. So I just wanted to share that information and clarify those two very important issues that have been raised and, you know, they are, they are legal issues to reach out to our counsel and, and because the superintendent had already reached out on that, on the one issue and there were questions that were asked directly of us, I thought it was important to respond. Any other Board or District News? Now we'll hear from our student representative.
Good evening, hi everyone. Students have begun AP exams this week, as you all know. Exams will continue for the following weeks and will conclude on May 16th. There will be some late testing occurring the week of May 19th. This week is War of the Classes. Students will be dressing up this week to gain points for their class. Monday was Country vs. Country Club, today was Idol Day, Wednesday is Hero vs. Villain, Thursday is School Class Colors, and Friday is Business on Top, Party on Bottom. War of the Classes competition will be after school Thursday. A big thank you to Athletic Council and the Booster Club for their support and organization for this week's festivities. In addition to all these events, this week is New York State Public High School Athletic Association Mental Health Awareness Week. Today, students and the National Honor Society and student government partner to put kind messages on all high school student lockers. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. I knew you were gonna clap. Good job. All right, moving on to item 10.01, the Board will acknowledge public beheard comments from our last board meeting and we thank Christina Davis for her comments. Public and students, public and students may comment on any agenda or non-agenda item. The Board appreciates hearing from the public, including students, on any agenda or non-agenda item. Please understand that by our adopted parliamentary procedure, the Board can't engage in discussion or answer questions during public beheard. Please know that we hear you and we take all your comments into consideration. The Board does reserve the right to correct any inaccuracies or misinformation during public beheard. Please limit your comments to three minutes, be civil, and do this, and do not name any particular individuals or promote any commercial ventures or products. People wishing to express individual student or personnel concerns can bring them to the superintendent's attention in private. And tonight, we have Jenny Jared signed up to speak.
Happy Tuesday, everyone. My name is Jenny Jared and I'm the mother of Fay at Bennett and Dylan in the middle school, who both love learning in our wonderful district. I've been a PTA parent at Woodstock Elementary, the president of the Bennett PTA and Booster Club leadership at the middle high school. I know you, I know your kids, I know their teachers, and I love you all. I had the good fortune of being a parent at Bennett for the three years as a combined four to six school and it was amazing. The energy of the kids in the hallway in the morning, all so different but young enough not to let that get in the way of their friendships. The music programs filled to the brim felt so rewarding to them and the enormous band, orchestra, and chorus you see in the middle school is a result of having enough kids to make a thriving elementary program. We had the after-school classes we're all talking about meeting with jazz band, art clubs, and robotics, and we had the magic of us, our district being all together. My daughter remains at Bennett this year, the last combined grade left over from the previous configuration, and I'll say that it's just not the same. Her orchestra is tiny and the halls are quiet and I really miss what we had. And I also dream about what we could have with all the kids together again. Pooling our brilliant teachers to lift up the education we offer, our special education children receiving the full programming they deserve, our music and art programs flourishing, and opportunities for mentoring and community building between our littles and our big ones in the middle high school. And with all the challenges facing our district and all the uncertainties in our world, we have the chance to make a purposeful decision about our future. We saved, we've dreamed, and the choice is in each of our hands. And the most important thing is that every person vote, everyone. I know this is hard and it's messy and unknowns are scary, but the one thing I know in my heart is nothing to fear, is the chance that we could all be together again. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Would anybody else like to speak? Mr. Smith?
Good evening, my name is Rory Smith and I'm running for a seat on the Board of Education. I want to thank the other candidates for stepping up to serve, especially Jenny Jared. She is amazing, kind, and compassionate and we are lucky to have her running. I want to show my support for the Board of Education and the administration for working hard to help move our district forward. My wife and I have raised two incredible kids that have both attended Antioa My wife and I have raised two incredible kids that have both attended Antiora K through 12. Our son is 18 and is graduating in June, and our daughter is 21 and graduated in 2022. Things are much different now than when we, excuse me, than when we grew up, and we need to work together to give our kids the best chance to succeed. The educational landscape is changing, and we must be prepared to change with it. If we are not willing to move forward, we will be left behind as other districts capitalize on being proactive. I believe a new, modern, centralized campus will help with improving so many other issues our district and children face, such as mental health, morale, inclusion, special education, declining enrollment, lower taxes, and attracting new families throughout the entire district. My family's at the end of our school journey, and having lived the great experiences with my kids in Antiora, I can see a way to make it even better for the future generations. That way is with voting yes to Prop 2 and updating the central campus. Prop 2 is on the ballot on May 20th. Voting for Prop 2 will give our school district needed improvements and upgrades that have been ignored for too long. All district kids, kindergarten through 12th grade, will benefit from these improvements. Thank you.
Phaedra?
Hi, I'm Phaedra Dagerman. Just something really quick. Christina Davis at Woodland Playhouse also did free childcare for the event that was here, and I just wanted to make sure that got mentioned because it was very generous of her. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? All right, thank you all so much. Do we need a break? Yep. How about a quick five-minute break? Okay. And how do we wanna, how do we wanna help our scene? All right, we are back from our break, onto item number 13.01. The Board will, the Board of Education hereby approves the 2025-2026 Board of Education meeting schedule. May I have a first? Trustee Knudsen, second? Trustee Ramondo? Any questions or comments? Superintendent McLaren?
I just wanted to comment, you will notice in your printout and we're on Diligent Community, that we included the 2025 Ulster County Legislative Session Schedule, and we do have some conflicts because they meet on Tuesdays and we meet on Tuesdays. And I have been contacted by a member of the community who likes to attend the Ulster County Legislative Meetings, but also wants us to make our meetings so that they don't conflict, but that would require us to literally change our meeting date. So I wanted to bring that up because I promised this community member that I would note it for consideration, but I think it's, it would, it would literally require us changing the day of the week that we meet.
Trustee Lynch?
Thank you for offering that. I was just curious, is there a reason why we do it Tuesdays? Because town boards also meet Tuesdays, the county legislature meets Tuesdays, school boards meet Tuesdays. I'm just wondering why that is. Is there a reason? Or is it just coincidence?
Historically, it has, it's just been the, the practice of Antiora. The school board has always determined to meet on Tuesdays. I don't know that, I don't know that there was a lot of consideration given to when other governmental boards are meeting. Some districts have meetings on Wednesdays.
I mean, I think, you know, if we wanted to consider changing that for next year, that, you know, we, we could consider it, but for this year, we're kind of locked in for sure. So, any other questions or comments about the Board of Education calendar? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right. May I have a motion to add an agenda item? Trustee Ramondo, first. Trustee Lynch, second. I'd like to add an agenda item called West Hurley Closing Agreement. And if everyone's in favor, we will vote on that now. Trustee Knudsen?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. And then I will read the resolution and we'll vote again. Board Clerk, are we doing this right? I just want to make sure. So we're reading it first, then we're asking for a first and a second and voting. Thank you. Okay. Whereas in February 2017, the Board of Education of the Antiora Central School District entered into a contract of sale for the sale of the former West Hurley Elementary School property to Cedar Development East LLC, and whereas the district and the purchaser wished to terminate all existing litigation between them and to complete the closing, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Antiora Central School District approves the agreement in substantially the form annexed heretofore as Exhibit A to terminate all existing litigation between the district and Cedar Development East LLC and to complete the closing and, and conveyance of the former West Hurley Elementary School property to Cedar Development East LLC upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the agreement. And be it further resolved that the Board President is authorized to execute the agreement, a fully executed copy of which shall be placed on file with the district clerk and any other documents necessary to effectuate the purposes of this resolution. And the superintendent, her designee, and/or the district's purchasing agent are authorized to issue such payments and related documentation as are set forth in the agreement. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second? Trustee Knudsen? Any questions or comments? We'll vote. Trustee Knudsen?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Onto our consent agenda. The Board hereby approves items number 14.02 through point, 14.08. May I have a first? Trustee Goodrich, second. Trustee Ramondo, any questions or comments? I reviewed the schedule you this time, and everything appears to be in order. Oh, Trustee Lynch?
I just want to acknowledge the great work of Amanda Allison. I am really indebted to you for building such a strong culture at this school and with all the teachers that worked alongside you. You've only advanced and enhanced our, our school, our reputation, and for providing the professional development that the teachers need, but also providing the leadership for, in, in terms of the curriculum expansion that you've brought to all of our students. So, thank you very much for all that you do. And I also just want to thank and acknowledge Sharon McNerney. Ms. Mack has been an institution, and she has touched so many lives, and my daughter in particular had her, and she changed her life. So, thank you for all the work that you do, Ms. Mack.
Thank you, Sarah. And yes, Amanda Allison, you will be sorely missed. It's a terrible loss for us, but a huge gift and gain for Red Hook. We also have, yes, we have a number of donations, and we'd like to thank our, our community for the very generous donations that we receive from them. All right, we'll do, we will not do a roll call vote on this, on the consent agenda tonight. All in favor? Onto item 15.01, second reading and adoption of policy 3430, school safety and, and educational climate reporting. Any, oh, may I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second? Trustee Goodrich? Any questions or comments about that policy? All in favor? Oh, sorry, Trustee Lynch? All in favor? The Board hereby adopts policy 3430 as written. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, did I not, I did not turn the page. Okay. Moving on, 15.02, second reading of and adoption of policy 6161, expense reimbursement. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second? Trustee Knudsen? Any questions or comments? All right, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. 15.03, second reading and adoption of policy 7350, corporal punishment. May I have a first? Trustee Goodrich, second. Trustee Ramondo, any questions? All in favor? Great, thank you. Second, I'm sorry, 15.04, second reading and adoption of policy 8460, field trips and excursions. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second. Trustee Knudsen, any questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. Onto committee reports. Trustee Lynch, would you like to talk about communications?
Sure, thank you. We did meet as a communications committee and talked about the upcoming, the past and upcoming opportunities to connect with the community about the vote that's coming up on May 20th at Bennett and Woodstock. The latter part of the meeting was really just focused on topics that we would want to include in the May board briefs as well, so we just floated a few different ideas and things that were coming up. So of course you'll have a chance as a board to review that content when it's ready. Trying to think, we did also see a timeline for different pieces of collateral, communications collateral that were coming out. There is a video that's being developed, and there's also board, what do you call them, signs, yard signs that explain when the vote is happening and what time. So if there's anything that anybody needs from the board communications committee, please let us know and we can help you get it.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Trustee Lynch?
I just had a question for the policy committee. I'm wondering if you were able to review the procedure that currently has come to our attention around the bus transportation and bus passes for extracurricular activities or- around the bus transportation and bus passes for extracurricular activities or music lessons, et cetera.
We reviewed all of the, uh, there are many policies around transportation. We reviewed all of them Monday, yeah, yesterday. It's all blurring together. And, um, uh, I believe they will be on the next board agenda.
I think trustee Lynch is talking about the state ed regulations that we reviewed as well. And, um, after reading them more thoroughly, we concluded as a, the committee concluded that the practice that we had previously of dropping students to non-district extracurricular activities actually is against the regulations. So we can provide that information to the board.
Any other committee reports? All right, any old business? We have our book study. The Governor, Governance Core two point O. And the assignment for this meeting was to read chapter seven on governance infrastructure. Any insights, folks? I loved, oh, go ahead. I, I really loved their, uh, the discussion of governance norms and, let me see, procedures. And I think I, I like the book so much because I feel like we're really accomplishing a lot of what, what I'm reading in the book. And, oh, you too. And, um, so I, I, I blocked a kind of long paragraph. I don't know if I'll read it, but maybe trustee Ramondo wants to, like, just... Okay, sure. We'll split it. I'll go first. "It's difficult to tease out the factors that make one group of people an effective team or, and another equally talented group of people, a dysfunctional one. Well-functioning, successful teams usually have chemistry and that can't be quantified. They seem to get into a virtuous cycle in which one good quality builds on another. Team members develop mutual respect because they respect one another, develop trust because they trust one another, and they share difficult information because they all have the same reasonable, reasonably complete information. They can challenge one another's conclusions coherently because a spirited give and take becomes the norm and they learn to adjust their own interpretations in response to intelligent questions." Did I finish it? Oh, sorry, okay. It was a run-on sentence. It was like one whole sentence. I didn't know where to stop. Okay. Trustee Knutson?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to call attention, what I really liked as it got toward the end of the chapter, the section on protocols, I thought was really interesting. And I, and the way the authors describe protocols is as sort of this scaffolding that makes the operation of a board run smoothly because everybody, everybody knows what to expect, right? And, um, and so I actually wanted to maybe task us to, uh, for, I, I know in the next meeting is the election, right? And there's typically a fair amount of downtime while you're sitting around waiting for the votes to come in, right? So I thought it might be interesting to work on a new trustee onboarding protocol at, during that time when we are not otherwise occupied. And because I think, um, you know, as the one, the one person who came in as a new trustee this year, it was fine, it was good, and people said, you know, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. But I think that, the, I think the board could be a little more proactive. Like, for example, early on in my board experience, I was asked which committees I wanted to be on without really knowing what the committees do. And so I would like to see when new trustee, because we are going to have two new trustees next year, that there be some sort of, um, pers, you know, plan where they could maybe, you know, that, that we say, if you're a new trustee, you're gonna have, you're gonna sit down for a phone call or you're gonna, with someone from each of the committees who is going to describe to you what that committee does before you have to express a preference. And I just think, um, that's just an example of something that was a little bit ad hoc for me that could be improved with a, with a sort of onboarding protocol. It doesn't have to be ten pages, but you know, just, just some very basic steps that we would want to see a new, a new trustee go through.
Great suggestion. Board Clerk, will you make a note of that for us? You got it, good, thank you. Anything else from that chapter? All right, we have two more chapters to go. I did look ahead. They're pretty short. Chapter eight is a little bit longer, but chapter nine is really short. Can we want to combine them and finish this up by the next meeting? Okay, good, great, perfect. All right. Any other old business? Any new business? Trustee Knutson?
So circling back to the very beginning of this meeting that I think began a week ago, uh, we were talking about, um, you know, cellphone interventions and that they had ticked up in March and that it is a thorny problem. And if, if you've been following the meetings all year, you know that I, early in the year, I was recommending a book to the community called The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Haidt. And the, um, so the administration has agreed graciously to set up a book discussion of that book for our community because I think it's a very important book for parents who may not be aware or haven't really thought completely through the implications of having pocket social media for young, particularly young teenagers and teenagers. And the book, Professor Haidt identifies the ages of ten to sixteen as the most vulnerable age to mental health problems arising from social media and smartphones, things like that. And so the district, I'm, I'm, I believe the district has purchased fifty copies of the book. And the way, uh, the plan is to, on June ninth, if you're interested in this topic, there will be a handout of, we will publicize, this is the first publicizing of this book discussion, which is going to happen in the fall, but we want the parents to have the book over the summer for summer reading. So there will be some outreach to parents through some form that I will leave to others who know how to do that better than I do. And if people sign up and they want a free copy of the book, they will be able to get it in the library in this building on June ninth. And then we will have a, maybe a little meet and greet with the people who are participating. It'll be just sort of like book club, really, just a, open discussion is the plan. Maybe guided by some faculty members, possibly we're putting, the, the administration is working on that. But if you're interested in the topic of teen mental health, social media, technology, the intersection, the issues, put June ninth in your calendar and you can come get a free book and read it over the summer. And then we can talk about it, we'll probably have a couple of sessions in the fall.
Excellent, thank you very much. Can trustees also join the book club?
Absolutely.
Good.
Community, and, and, you know, grandparents, you know, anybody who cares about this issue, because I think, you know, it's one of the, I, I, I keep saying I don't want to spoil the book, but, um, this is an issue that really is best confronted with collective action because if, it's very hard to deal with individually because of, you know, kids don't want to be the one kid who's, you know, not allowed to have something or has to, you know, that, that's why I think the, um, the policy that the high school is, is adopting of phones away from bell to bell just removes that, you know, it's, it's a collective action, yes, but it really just takes the issue off the table for the portion of the day where the students are really supposed to be focused on school. So, um, so, yeah, it's all hands on deck, so anybody who's interested would be welcome.
Terrific. Any other new business? Any requests for information? Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Under new business for tonight, I just wanted to, uh, discuss the NISBA resolution process. And I'd, I'd like to start that conversation like at the next board meeting so that we're not scrambling on, on July first to write resolutions during the, in the middle of a board meeting. So everybody that's sitting at this table right now knows the process. We have the resolution toolkit that explains the process. We have access to the current resolutions and it's always helpful to review. And so we'll, I think we'll put some time on the agenda at the, at the June twentieth, uh, May twenty, wait, May twentieth meeting and, uh, and start the conversation there and then we'll move forward from there. Any requests for information? Trustee Lynch?
Yes, thank you. I've, from the Communications Committee, we, and, and then at the board table, we've talked a bit about a new potential implementation tool for our parent engagement policy. I'm not second guessing that that's what it's called, but we have a policy on community engagement, I think. And it's the use of an app called Parent Square. I'm hoping that the administration could just give us an, an update, an ongoing update as to how that's going. I, I really appreciate the work that the Director of Technology, John, and the superintendent have both led, but I recognize that it's going to require a lot of input. So I just wanted to ask that the board be kept updated on that process.
Anything else, any other requests for information? Trustee Knutson?
Yes, so, um, this is a request that came out of the, the meeting at Woodstock School on, on the first. It's been raised, obviously, a lot that there are parents in Woodstock of very young children who are concerned about if we move to a central campus, what the implications are for young, very young children on the bus. And so this is really, this is an idea that I have, that I don't know if it's possible. So my RFI, much, much as with the after-school busing question, is whether there are state regulations that would prohibit this. But here's the idea, um, that would it be possible in 2028 to create an opt-out system for parents of young children in that, in that densely populated area of the district to opt out of their regular bus pickup in front of their house and create a bus that would start at the Woodstock School and go straight from the Woodstock School to Bennett in a, in a straight line? That would shorten that ride for those young children. Now, what I think we would have to do is, is, is see if you would get enough parents who would agree to drive their children, to deliver their children to Woodstock to, to Woodstock to catch that bus. And you, and could do the same thing in Phoenisha, by the way, I should say that too, because we have, we had a school there too. But I just wonder if that might be a, an innovation that could solve that particular anxiety and maybe also save the district's, you know, some, some transportation funds. Again, uh, there may be legal complications, so, and it wouldn't be for a while that it would, could even possibly happen. But I'm just wondering if we can, you know, find out, you know, because obviously if, if the state says you can't do that, then it's not, you know, we're not going anywhere. But, um, I just wanted to make the initial inquiries there.
Thank you, great idea. Any other requests for information? All right. Our next meeting is May twentieth, which is also our budget vote, our bond vote and our Board of Ed elections. Please do not forget to vote. May I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Goodrich, second. Trustee Ramondo, all in favor? Thanks, everyone.